Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Town Council regular meeting Wednesday, September 3rd in the Green Room. We'll begin with a pledge led by Dennis.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, are there any visitors who wish to speak? Hey, Tom.
Good morning. How's everyone? I'm Tom Schultz, Chair of the Clinton Human Rights Committee, and I'm here this morning to introduce Mackay Howard, who is our new candidate for position as student representative, and I'm hoping that you'll give your approval at your next meeting. I have to say, the student representatives have been one of the most wonderful aspects of our Human Rights Committee in that we're really connected with the school. We've had wonderful student representatives, and I think Mackay, who's an amazing student and an entrepreneur, he's involved in many activities, both in the community as a volunteer and also he fences, he does amazing things. So, he actually came to us two years ago when he was a freshman, and unfortunately, he kind of had to wait his turn. So, he's a junior this year, so we expect to have him around for two years, and I'm very pleased to put his name forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mackay. At this point, I would like to ask to amend the agenda and a motion to add an executive session at the end of this meeting.
Make a motion.
All right, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. All right. Item number three, the approval of minutes, August 20th. Is there a motion?
Submove.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, the appointments, and we have John May here, and he is wanting to be appointed to a full seat rather than the alternate seat he now holds until a term of June 30th, 2029. Is there a motion?
Submove.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number five, the Board of Education, a non-lapsing fund request, transfer request, and Mary Ann is here to speak to it.
So, I shared with the Town Council, I think through your packet, just a brief background information about the non-lapsing account. Most of you are aware of it. At this point, the unaudited expectation for unexpended funds for this year for the Board of Ed operating budget is 162. And so, at this point, this is the time of year that if a request was to be made, that we would make the request to move that or a portion of it into the non-lapsing fund, which again is for either capital expenditures or unanticipated special ed costs. Last night at the board meeting, the board did approve the request of a transfer of 150,000 from the 2425 Board of Ed operating budget into the existing Board of Ed non-lapsing account established by the town in 2020. So, I'm here representing that request.
Thank you. So, I'm just going to jump into the motion, and we can discuss. A motion to allow the Board of Ed to transfer 150,000 from fiscal year 2025 unexpended, unrequested operating budget funds to the existing non-lapsing account. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, okay, that was too fast. Go ahead. Yeah, 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 yeah. Discussion?
I was gonna be like, what's going on here? I wouldn't expect nothing less.
Just want to go over the facts of, so you're gonna take 150 out of the 162, is that right?
Yes.
Just a little bit of why.
So, there's a couple reasons that in the last two years, we've asked for that. The biggest one, from my perspective, is we've seen these fluctuating special ed costs, so I want to make sure we have some money in there. But the main reason, because right now, it's a little over $900,000, according to Bob. We have a big project with the Elliott Windows and Unit Heater Project that is in capital right now. It's, we're in the process of getting the plans designed for that and a cost estimate. So, in the proposed upper, or proposed capital that we gave to the town last year, we're anticipating around a million dollars, but we have no idea what those costs will actually be until we get the design and we get a cost estimate this year. So, for me, looking at those unexpended funds, what we put here has the potential to offset future costs, potentially bonding or cost-related. So, that project is the biggest one, Dennis, at this point, I think, which is motivating-
Okay, Mary Ann, you know my feelings about this.
Well, I think I do.
This is not supposed to be an extra capital expenditure fund. This was originally designed, or whatever, for special education emergencies, or some other type of emergency, not for a planned use of capital expenditure funds. The one time that we approved $358,000 for special ed, you gave it back because you didn't need it. Since then, or other times, we used it to put a box truck someplace, we did it for Morgan Cameras and Phone at Morgan. We're doing it for everything but what the design was for this particular, whatever you want, account. So, right now, we have $780,963 in it, by my last figures, unless, does it change, Bob?
It was eight something last time.
Yes, eight. It was something like that. I mean, yeah. It's funny, I talk about this, you talk about $780,000, like it's chump change. We should know the exact amount. That's number one.
Oh, we know the exact-
That, well, then, why isn't the exact amount brought up to us? Why is it that Dennis Donovan has to keep it by pencil? Why isn't that information to the people all the time? That's number one, my great. Because last year, when I brought it up, which Mary Ann, through her defense, said she has no accountability, it's us, so we should know.
Yeah, it's a-
One of the first things should be brought up during this conversation. Right now, we have $780,963. So, what I'm saying is, we're getting sort of blasé about this thing, and just, oh, this is automatic, this is automatic, this is automatic. Personally, I'd rather just see the $162,000 put right back into our undesignated fund where it belongs, because it's the taxpayers' money. And that's just my, rather than putting it in some place that gets frozen, you can only use it for this, 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 and whatever, and quite frankly, use for everything else but what it was designed for, I don't think that's right to the taxpayers. When we set this thing up, so that's just my two cents.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstaining? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much, Mary Ann. Item number six, Human Services. Kathy Grega is here to speak about a grant.
Good morning, everyone. So, this is our annual local prevention council grant that gets issued every year from the Department of Human, or Mental Health and Addiction Services. They are basically, it's the same amount of money every year, just over $4,000. I think it's $4,259. And they are outlawing the goals. The goals are prevention and capacity building. We have to pick a substance. We're choosing to focus on THC use primarily in vaping with our young people this year. So, the money will go towards workshops for young people, but also educational workshops for the parents, to provide them information, resources, and just kind of some helpful and beneficial info in that area. And then, as with the years passed, resources to continue to work with our React Kids and groups and activities.
Any questions?
Yeah. You know, I don't know what this could be. What agency actually spends this money?
Human Services.
Human Services Department? Okay. We gotten a couple of grants like this before.
This is an annual grant, yes.
Annual grant. I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you, Dennis.
And I'm all in favor of all these grants. The only thing I would like to see once in a while is maybe a year-end report of just how that money was spent. Okay? What did you actually use the money for? I think that would be helpful, you know, just to let the public, again, know that we're not just taking this money and, you know, throwing it away. That's all, that's my only comment. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Quick question on that. Are you referring to this grant specifically, or just an overview of the grants that they receive and how they're dispersed in the community? Because they do get multiple grants. So, are you referring to this one that you'd like an update on, or just the grants like that they receive?
Are we approving these grants?
We are, yes.
Yeah. Well, every grants we approve as a Town Council, I think, you know, it'd be nice to have people come back to us. I think we ask other departments and other agencies to occasionally come to the table and tell us how they spend their money. We get a financial report from the library, we get a financial report from the Fire Department-
There's seven.
Because they're not town, you know, agencies. I understand this is a Human Services, but it'd just be nice to know where, you know, the money's coming in, again, just-
Transparency.
So, we know-
Yep.
We know where the money's going.
Okay. All right, so if there aren't any other questions, is there a motion to apply for the local prevention council grant in the amount of $4,152.79?
Submove.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, the sidewalk project update, and Abby is here.
Good morning. So, I'm gonna give you a quick update on our TAP 27131 sidewalk project, which is the sidewalks heading west from downtown toward Grove Street and North High. And then, at the end, I'm gonna ask for a consideration of a motion about some extra work that we think is going to actually improve the project overall and be a benefit beyond, you know, sort of just, just the sidewalks themselves, but I'll get into that as we go, so I'll discuss that with you. So, the first thing is, I think, Michelle updated you at your last meeting, that the sidewalk project has reached the 30% design benchmark, and this is the project where we're in that 80%, 20% town match to fund the installation of both the north and south sides of the street. So, we are looking at what was originally just the north side of the project. The Town Council agreed to let it be expanded to be both sides of the street, since DOT was, was keen to see that happen. And we're at that 30% critical milestone where we will be asking you to make decisions about how the project may proceed going forward. The first piece of this is that we originally budgeted $1.4 million for only the north side improvements of the road. BL Companies, who is our consultant, has come back with a 30% design estimate with, including a two-year escalator of costs, since this actual construction is a couple years out, of $1.48 million. So, we're about $80,000 more for both sides of the roads, which is pretty incredible. It was, it's lower than we thought, and we're hoping that when actual dollars come through, that things much like the sidewalk project that just finished, hopefully, it comes in even lower than that. So, we're, we'll keep our fingers crossed, can't predict what's gonna happen in a couple years, but that's, that's where the estimate stands today. What happens right now is that we go through a process of public comment and engagement with this project. So, one of the things that I want to invite you to is September 16th at 7:00 in this room, we're gonna be having a public meeting to go over the plans in detail and to talk about what the actual design of this will look like. We have been fortunate in part of this design, there are very few properties that are looking at potential takings or needing to give up their owned property for the project, so that's great. We don't get to have a lot of conversations with those folks, because perhaps you may recall, the Town Council deferred the conversations about any right-of-way acquisition to the state, so the state's staff can't reach out and talk to folks about those. What I will be doing is, I will be going sort of door-to-door with anybody who has significant encroachments into the state right-of-way that may be affected by a sidewalk construction project. So, there's a couple properties, I have meetings set up for this week, and we'll be talking to the owners ahead of people getting notices about the September 16th meeting, because we don't want any surprises. We want to partner with folks to find solutions and make things the best they can be on their properties. So, what will happen is, we have the 30% design, we'll present it at a public meeting on the 16th, that's gonna be advertised officially in the current, but we're doing a local advertisement here. Everybody along the way will get a letter telling them, you know, here's the meeting, come talk to me, you know, we can go through the project personally if you'd like to. And then, after September 16th, we have a two-week comment period, during which anybody can, you know, again, provide additional comment, raise any concerns, any of those types of things that need to happen for the project. Any comments that we get, we'll compile for you, and then, in October, you will be asked to vote on whether or not this project proceeds to final design. That final design vote is the commitment, if you will, right? So, everything that we're doing up until now is subject to the 80/20 match, the design goes forward, and it's, and it's great, but what we need to do ultimately is get an authorization from the state to proceed to final design, and that happens only with your approval. And we talked about needing to come back to you when we were at that stage. So, so that will happen in, at one of your October meetings, and so, just something to be, to be aware of. And from that point forward, the expectation is that the project will proceed to construction, and our match will be contingent, and any money spent beyond that, that 80/20 match will be contingent on us seeing the project through. So, we're at that kind of critical decision point. A couple of things have come up during the design phase for 30% that we want to make you aware of and, you know, answer questions on, and then see if you are willing to go forward with. So, there are two pieces of potential extra work. The first is, the project scope area originally went from John Street Extension, so by the T-Shop, all the way out to North High. When we added the second side of the road, they essentially cut off the west, or the eastern boundary at John Street, so the corner next to the old Party Bazaar that the town owns, that little triangle of land, that was sort of the end of the project. And so, what was happening in the 30% designs is that it wraps around and stops. There are no crosswalks across Stevens and Pearl to get over to UPS, Chips, and into downtown. So, for fairly, you know, for fairly short design money, to the tune of $9,409, so a $1,881.80 match from the town, we can have that surveyed and designed and included in the final design of the project, which makes, I think, a lot of sense, and is a pretty low-hanging fruit, to make sure that full connection is happening on both sides of the road. The John Street connection across is, it was already included, so the CVS piece is already there, but the, but this one would need to be added. So, that's one. The other is, and I'm sure you have all been, you know, driving along Route 1 during intense rainfalls that we're seeing more frequently, and have experienced the flooding in front of the mobile station that happens with that catch basin, the pipe sizing is, is a little bit off there, and as it goes down under property and then daylights on Grove into Haynes Creek. So, this is an area where we have an opportunity, the state has agreed to include design and construction of any drainage improvements in this project, which is not typical. Typically, drainage happens a separate piece, the sidewalk projects are their own bucket, but because the new improvement would likely be inundated in these, in these storms, you know, a couple weeks ago, the beginning of August, that big one we had, I was going to pick up my kids, and the water was up to the benches at the picnic tables at the mobile station. So, it does get high. It's short-lived, but it's a nuisance, and it will interrupt the new, the new sidewalk improvement. So, the state has said they will include this in the 80/20 match if the, if the town wants to go forward and, and put that in. The total drainage design is $64,766, 20% of which would be a $12,953.20 commitment from the town. That, again, gets us to final design. When we go out to bid, we could add that drainage as an add alternate, so there are some decisions to make at the time that costs come in and all those types of things, but if we want that problem to be designed and potentially solved, this is the time to start making those decisions. So, those are the two pieces. You should have in front of you a memo from me, that I've, I've put a little red circle over the aerial to show you exactly what we're talking, but I wanted to see if there's any questions about that, because whether you vote, hopefully, today, and if not today, then certainly at the October meeting, the consultants will need an express authorization and communication from Michelle to the state in order to get permission to, to modify the contract to include these two points of extra work. So, that's, that's where we're at, and I'm happy to answer any questions and stop talking, but the, the project is making good progress, and, and it's a really great opportunity, as we've said all along, to connect, you know, continue the sidewalk network, connect downtown. This is sort of one of the primary pieces we're talking about in the POCD and in other, you know, planning and economic development conversations, so it's, it's a big deal. So, we're, we're excited to see that the numbers came in a little lower than we thought. And again, we have that, that 1.4 in capital. We are using that to, to, you know, pay our invoices and get our 80% reimbursements, and so that will be revolving throughout the course of the project, but we are, we're in good shape.
So, that's, that's what I was gonna ask. So, we have that 1.4, and you said it's revolving, so if you, as you ask for more things, you know, we have to keep an eye on the match dollars. So, I was gonna ask, where, where do those dollars come from? And are you saying that we have such a surplus that we could wait till the next, our next budget session, or would we have to come up with the money now?
We actually have an appropriation on the books. If you remember, we approved the $1.4 million grant to be funded by grants, but at the same time, the Town Council approved in the CIP for cash flow reasons and for match. The match then was $280,000. We appropriated 1.4 for cash flow reasons. So, there is money already appropriated, as long as you approve this, that, that additional match can be handled out of the CIP.
And the motion that, sorry, I draft, I put a draft motion together for your consideration that includes reference to that CIP fund, so that, that, that's where the, the extra money would, would come through. So, the total, the total would be $74,175, but of that, only $14,835 would actually be paid by the town and not be reimbursed for both of these projects.
So, for the $14,000, you're getting the design base for this additional connection of Pearl Street and Stevens, and then the drainage, right?
Any other questions? Since Todd is here, I would like to ask Todd, as far as the drainage, is this a good opportunity to jump on?
Absolutely. I mean, it's a state issue. Right now, we're gonna get it taken care of, because if we don't, the state's not gonna, they're not coming out tomorrow to fix it. It's been that way for 30 years, so it's a good opportunity to try to get it fixed now.
Thank you. Any other questions? Rabby? No? So, I would like to request a motion to authorize a town manager to execute the additional services agreement, number one, with consultant BL Companies for the Route 1 Pedestrian Safety Improvements Project, contingent on the council's approval for the project to proceed to final design and to authorize the use of the sidewalk project line appropriation in the CIP fund for associated costs.
Shouldn't we have a public hearing first?
I have a motion here to ask.
Well, I mean, we're having a public hearing to discuss this, correct? On the 16th?
It will come up in the public hearing, and so, we put this before you to start considering it. If you're, if you're not comfortable voting today and it happened in October, that's okay, that there's, there's nothing that says you have to do this immediately, but it will be a decision that you need to make. So, we don't, we don't want, we don't want to throw everything at you in October and ask you to make a decision on the spot.
I know we need to make that decision, but we should have a public hearing before we make a decision. That's just my opinion.
Do we, is this a motion to add what you discussed today, so it goes to the public hearing?
It will, this will be discussed with the public, it'll, it will talk about this as part of that presentation regardless. What this does is, it says, if, if the council, after the public hearing and comment, decides to move this to final design, these two pieces would be included. And so, the public will have an opportunity to comment. This is not saying that you are including these, you, you still have to make the vote in the final design. So, without that vote, none of this happens. So, it's really, it's a, it's a little bit of a chicken-or-egg thing, but if you, if you want that security of transparency and feel, you know, sort of having that element of it, that's absolutely fine, so there's, there's no problem with that. Either way, the public gets a chance to comment on it, and you get a final decision to say if it goes to final design, you know, we can, we can move forward or not. So, if you'd like to wait, that's okay, too, but we didn't want you to go in, we don't want you going into the public hearing phase without knowing this extra piece, because that wasn't something that was, that was discussed with you before.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table, what do you want to do with it? Motion?
There is no motion yet. I asked for one, yeah.
I mean, this, this motion authorizes the town manager to execute an additional services agreement. So, we are authorizing the town manager to sign an agreement. So, my feeling is that we should be having a public hearing and hearing from the public before we sign anything. That's my opinion.
It's not gonna impact the project at all, right? Like, so if it comes up in public hearing in the discussion of the additional add-on based on the drainage issue and based on these things, we can still have a public hearing and discuss it at that point, and then after the public hearing, make the decision.
Absolutely.
That makes sense.
Okay, so there is no motion. I'll take it as that. Okay?
We'll, we'll bring it back to you at the same time as the final vote. Yeah, that's cool. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, number eight, proposed town ordinance on automated traffic enforcement safety device, and the chief is here.
Good morning, everyone. It's tough to follow that act. Mine's not gonna cost you anything, so I guess that's the only leg I got to stand on on this one, but I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Hopefully, you're provided with the draft language for the proposed ordinance for use of automated traffic enforcement safety devices. We've discussed it, we showed you the presentation, so I'm here to answer any questions anybody might have concerning the, the language of the ordinance, our next steps forward, or any questions or concerns that you might have.
Is there gonna be a review of the ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
He reviewed it, it's fine. He also, they checked with the other communities that have the similar ordinance in place, and they've had no issues with it after it's gone into effect.
There was a recent article about the data sharing from the third-party vendor of the other cameras in town. Was it reviewed in light of that?
No, it's just, it was reviewed in part of being an ordinance that they would, that's part of the process, they have to review it, and when I told them that this language was pulled from other towns that have implemented it, they took it upon themselves to go investigate those other towns to see if they've had any issues with the ordinance, and they have not. But it had nothing to do with any type of sharing or anything that you've shared with that, with the article that's been out in the paper.
Yeah, my concern is just the liability for the town, and if this covers us.
Yeah, no, there is no liability for the town, and it would be the, the vendor, I mean, I believe it was asked of the vendor when he was here, too, about the data sharing, and they don't share the data.
The data's only used for that enforcement. The article you're referring to, number one, was incorrect. It has nothing to do with automated traffic safety devices, it has to do with license plate readers, which is a different vendor, which is Flock. It also stated that we had 96 cameras, which we do not, we only have eight, and it said that it reached out for us to comment, and it never did reach out to us for comment, because we would have clarified. So, that is our vendor for license plate readers, and we can demonstrate that it's improved safety dramatically since we've implemented that program, and we've run up against no claims of, of using information improperly, or the vendor selling information improperly. They don't sell the information, it belongs to us, and it's purged, per state statute.
Which vendor are you talking about?
Flock.
Okay. So, my concern just remains the same, is my line of questioning for the last time, is that that data remains where it's supposed to and used for the purposes that were outlined. Pro-public safety, I just want to make sure that we're using it.
Absolutely, sir. I, I understand that concern as well, and we make sure that we follow all the state statutes, and Flock is a major vendor to the state of Connecticut as well, so we're not violating the Trust Act. the Trust Act. All that information remains for law enforcement purposes only, and not sold to third-party vendors for miscellaneous purposes.
Not remain to the ordinance, but if that company gets bought out by another company, like, what happens at that juncture?
The state of Connecticut still mandates the rules in which they need to operate within this state. So at this point, I don't see Flock being bought out by anybody. As a matter of fact, I see them probably buying out most companies there, one of the largest vendors now of LPRs and camera systems in the United States utilized by law enforcement and municipalities. So I don't really think that's on the near horizon at all. I don't think anybody's big enough at this point to purchase them. They're buying all the other companies.
So I have a question, or maybe just wanted to get a little bit of clarification, get your thoughts, you know. You see what happens with Mary Ann with the non-lapsing fund, so you're gonna have a situation here where there's gonna be revenue coming in for these, for this purpose, and I don't think we've talked out specifically, you know, what happens with that. Is that gonna just go to your department and be taken into consideration when we do the budget? Or is it going to go into the undesignated fund? Or what's gonna happen with that?
No, the statute by the state of Connecticut is very clear. The Public Act is very clear as to where revenue that's generated from these devices is spent, and it can only be spent for traffic safety and traffic safety roadway improvement. So either enforcement, engineering, i.e. sidewalks, improving intersection control signals, re-engineering roadways, guardrails, more traffic enforcement. That is clearly what has to be done, so we would set a special fund up through finance. Any money that comes in through this program would have to be sent into that, and then that money would only be drawn for the specific purposes outlined by the Public Act. So it can't go into your undesignated fund. It can't just be a slush fund for the municipality to spend it on whatever they want. The money has to be clearly designated and spent for that purpose only, for the purposes of traffic safety improvements.
And the entity that makes that decision is this body, similar to the non-lapsing fund for?
That would be, so, I mean, we would have to decide where that money is spent, and we would put it in that account, and obviously, you're the fiduciary body, so any expenditures of that, I would imagine, would go through however you want to set up that process.
So it can't be spent on personnel?
It could be spent on personnel if that personnel were used to increase traffic enforcement.
If he created a traffic, if he did a traffic enforcement team or?
If we set up a traffic enforcement squad, we could use the funding for that purpose because it's traffic safety improvement. Over the past several years, post-2020, the state has, and the rest of the country, has experienced a significant spike in traffic fatalities, traffic accidents, and traffic violations. It's just a lack of enforcement, and I think that's why we're gonna see this becoming the trend. It took a long time for it to start in the state of Connecticut. Right now, there are five municipalities that have approved use of these devices and five more currently under review with the State Department of Transportation. So that would be 10, and I think there's a lot more that are starting again into the queue, because, again, this is not, we're not viewing this as a source of revenue. I don't want to view it as a source of revenue, because it's ad hoc and it's hit or miss. And ideally, I didn't, well, we wouldn't get any revenue from it. That's what I prefer to see, because that means we're getting compliance with the traffic laws, and we're not seeing the violations, because it's a public safety program. I don't have the personnel to do all the things that are required of us, to respond to medical calls, to calls for service, to nuisance calls, to whatever type of complaints, motor vehicle accidents, you name it. We don't have the amount of personnel on staff to do the traffic enforcement, to try and get people to voluntarily comply with our traffic laws. So this is basically what we used to refer to it as the iron sergeant in my early patrol days, never sleeps, always watching, and making sure you're on your post and doing your job. This enforces that people will follow the traffic laws, and, you know, when we did present you with possible revenue numbers, those were calculated at a 90% reduction in violations. So we're figuring it's gonna be very effective, and also an 80% rate of pay, people actually paying the violations when they pay them. So those numbers are still very high, and that was with a great reduction, because we didn't want to present you with untrue figures. We're leaning heavy to actually getting compliance with the devices, because in our mindset, our local residents are gonna know where they are, number one, so we should get more compliance out of our local residents. The positions where we place them are high rates of collisions for the red light cameras and the speed cameras in the school zone. So we have placed them in areas that we have big safety concerns for not only our vehicles, but the mixing of vehicles and pedestrians. So just a side, quick sidebar, the sidewalk program to us is very helpful. The completion of the sidewalk on East Main, that was one of our heaviest areas of vehicle pedestrian accidents in the entire town. So we like to see separation where we can, and we like, if we can't get separation, we like to see compliance with existing traffic laws. It's just a safety issue.
Dennis?
Yeah, I just have one comment. Hearings shall be conducted by a hearing officer who shall be appointed by the town manager. Where will we get this pool of hearing officers? I mean, who's gonna be the hearing officer?
Go ahead. If I may, yeah, the reason I knew that would come up is that question. This is my thought process behind this. Number one is, I don't want the police department to be seen as a revenue collection agency. We are a law enforcement agency. You can, with, there will be a revenue stream, no matter how we slice the pie. There's gonna be a revenue stream. So I would prefer that the police department is out of the adjudication process. We're in the enforcement process. I don't want to be part of the adjudication process for violations as well. I think it sends a bad message to the public. It's, we're judge, jury, and executioner, and then it starts to become seen as a revenue stream. So if we have a third party that's appointed, and you could take a magistrate, it could be a probate judge, it could be anybody. They don't even have to have a legal degree. But I think if it's appointed by another body in the town, the town's governance body, it's just more transparent, we're more accountable, and there's a third party that makes this more of an actual process as opposed to, the police department said you did it, you're paying, and that's it.
I agree. So my question then is to you.
Right, so we have attorneys that, you know, I've had a lot of hearings for employee matters, so there are people out there who do this. And I could also reach out to other towns that have this language as well and see the pool that they pull from. But it would be a, you know, a fair party that would sit and review the situations.
So we don't have to establish a pool here in town?
No, no, no. No, it would be someone not affiliated with the town. No, 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 no. It would be-
People start saying, well, why is Bob, you know, what makes him the?
And it wouldn't have to, it wouldn't be the same person every time, just based on availability and how often it would happen.
There's a pool around the state? Is that what you're saying?
I'm sure there is. I would have to look into that, but, like I said, we have situations where we have some matters that need a arbitrator or a third party, and we have a resource to get those.
Because that's my biggest concern also with the chief, is the fact that-
As mine is, too.
I don't want the police, I don't want people to think, oh, they're getting railroaded. The police got the thing up, and the police are giving you the hearing. I got no shot of winning.
Absolutely not.
You know, you want to be fair.
Absolutely.
How does that person get paid?
They bill us.
So the town will cover that cost?
It would come out of their funds, their revenue.
What funds?
It would come out of the revenue generated from this, because it's all part of traffic enforcement. So it wouldn't cost the town anything.
So just so you know, too, there's, by, you know, section 500-26 of our ordinance, which is drawn directly from the Public Act, there are only six defenses that you can propose at this hearing. So there's only six, and they're clearly delineated. Basically, you have to be an emergency vehicle, you gotta be directed by a police officer to go through it, you have to go through the light to get out of the way of an emergency vehicle, or it's not working. So basically, those are the only six. They're clearly delineated in our ordinance, and they're drawn directly from the Public Act governing this. So that's all the state of Connecticut says is viable defense. So there's only six. You can't say, hey, well, you know, my baby was crying, or I looked out the window, or my wife's having a baby, or whatever.
I have a question with that. No red light camera, no right on red. First responders in town, are they gonna keep getting hit with a notification? Or can you give them a list of plates to say, these are our first responders, so it's not, doesn't become a nuisance?
We have a list of plates, so, all our first responders, and it's always reviewed. So it's reviewed by our vendor first, and then it comes to our hearing, our, basically, our viewing officer. So we would ensure that if there was a problem, if there was something not right, we just wouldn't send out, you wouldn't send the violation. So they're all reviewed to ensure that we're not getting into situations like that where people that shouldn't get the ticket are getting the ticket. So there is some fail safes in place.
Anyone else? I recall it was, this was, came up with a desire for an SRO officer at Elliott?
Correct. So that's not, obviously, not, the only way that that would work is if we have, generating enough funds to provide a traffic safety squad, which would then allow me to have extra bodies on the road. So that's kind of a little bit far downstream, so at this point, I think we need to address them, as Dennis had pointed out, two standalone issues.
Okay, thank you.
One more question. Data from other towns, right? There's approximately five other towns already doing this?
Correct. Greenwich, Marlboro, Middletown, Washington, and Weathersfield.
So do they have any trending data, existing data, that we could potentially use to actually, good discussion of what percentage go to hearings of the violations, what time, how much accounts for money, what they're doing for hearing officers? Because I really think some, I know it's a rapidly growing thing, and a lot of towns are jumping on it, but at least getting some trending data from those towns would help to-
Yeah, the issue with that is, we've been leaning on the data from our vendor, who was well-established in Virginia and Maryland and other areas, because they've been, you can get data for more than a year. Basically, the longest one in the state of Connecticut was December of '24, and that was in Washington, and it was only one speed camera, and it actually wasn't turned on until, I think, March or April. Greenwich just got theirs July 7th, Marlboro got theirs May 16th, and Weathersfield got theirs July 15th. So there's not a ton of data available just yet, but our vendor assures us that you really don't see a lot of appeals. Basically, it's a $50 fine. You can just pay it online. Most people are not gonna be bothered with coming into a hearing for $50. They know it's not going against their license. They know it's not getting reported to insurance. So it's not, there's not as much of a penalty as when one of our officers writes you an infraction. One of our officers writes you an infraction, that's getting reported to your insurance. Your insurance rates are going up. They're usually much stiffer fines, you know, they start out at about $135 just for a stop sign violation or a red light violation. This is just $50, so most people do pay the violation. So the hearings, you may get a bunch just in the beginning and then have them fall off. So I wouldn't want to take the data that we have right now from the Connecticut departments only because it's just so new. I'd like to see it stretched out over at least a six, eight, two-year period to get a clear picture of it. But our vendor's been doing it for a very long time, and basically, they said, there's not a huge number of hearings. And hearings are short, because they can only last for the six defenses that are allowable under Connecticut law. So a hearing should, theoretically, you could go through 25 or 30 people in less than 45 minutes, because you can only argue one of those six defenses. And if you don't have one of those six defenses, you don't have a case, because that's all the state law will allow as a defense.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, so is there a motion to approve the draft ordinance as presented and send to public hearing on October 2nd, 2025 at 6:00 p.m.? Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And if the council has any further questions before the public hearing, please just let me know, and I'll provide you whatever information that I can get to you. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Item number nine, year-end transfers with Bob. Welcome, Bob.
Yes, these are the annual year-end budget transfers. All the transfers are handled within the department, except for the last transfer relating to legal services. We had to pull those transfers from other departments, mainly employee benefits. We had significant savings in health insurance, and, yep, that's it. This will basically, once these transfers are done, effectively after the non-lapsing, close the books for fiscal year ending 2025.
Any questions for Bob?
Yeah, I'm glad Bob touched the one that I was gonna talk about. I'm trying to bring it up on my screen. I think it was $140,000 extra we had to put into the legal fund?
Uh, yes.
Is that plus what we, thank you, there you go. So that's extra to what we had already allocated by the budget, right?
Uh, that's correct.
Can you give me an idea of just what the total legal was for the year then, when we had this $140?
Yes, so the budget was $110,000, so the total legal was $250,000 plus.
$250.
And Bob gave out at the, two meetings ago, a breakdown of what those legal expenses were. Those additional expenses that put the budget over were Pearson, land use things from many years. None of them were related to the current. What we based our budget on and our figure, these were, in addition, that were not something that we could project.
A lot of tax appeal cases.
Tax appeals.
Tax appeals, did you say?
Yes.
Yeah, land use issues, and then the side prey and the Pearson sale, and doing all of that.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the stupid question, but I gotta ask it. When we hired this, our legal firm, I guess we didn't anticipate that they would handle these things? This wasn't part of, like, the contract, or?
Nope. So first and foremost, when we brought on the legal team, these matters were already very much either going to trial or very, the current, the firm that was handling them was very much involved. So turning it over to them really was not in the best interest of the town and would have dragged it out even longer, because they would have had to get up to speed with the cases. And we kept them on based on also the recommendation of the assessor and the tax collector. And then, obviously, the sale for Pearson was established, so they were already involved in the side prey, so changing that. And certain issues are not always covered under the retainer. Big real estate sales and things like that are over and above. So this would not have been a cost savings if we brought it over to them.
Any other questions? All right, so is there a motion to approve the year-end transfers request as presented by the finance director? Is there a second?
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you, Bob. Number 10 is an economic development update.
Okay, all right. So, good morning. So for economic development, we have, as you are aware, we have the free trolley in Clinton, and the funding was supposed to be cut this year, but we were able to work something out with Connecticut River Valley to have them fund it this year, and we put a great amount of effort into increasing ridership to give us a better, more leverage to get grants and to try to get additional funding for this. And it was a huge success. So we went from, when the trolley starts in May, Memorial Day, and runs to Labor Day, in May, we had 46 riders. In June, it went up to 285. In July, 541, and in the month of August, almost 650 riders. And Labor Day alone had 35. So it was utilized, people really just didn't, I think, know about it, and it was a great success. So I wanted to share that with you, because that is a, something unique to Clinton that helps support local businesses as well. So Abby and I and some other stakeholders are gonna be working on trying to get some funding in place for next season, and it's also obviously helpful for the environment, because there's less cars on the road. Alan is-
Alan is also gonna be working on an activity. We're in the planning stages for a Halloween in Clinton, so this would be in addition to the trunk or treat. It would be something that would take place down in the Main Street area here where, you know, the stores decorate their storefronts and do the window displays. We would do some kind of a Halloween parade where we would all meet at town hall. Town hall would have candy and they would parade up, meet the businesses, get candy, similar to like what they do in malls where they go to the stores and come back around, just something to bring people into the center area. So Alan is working on that. And then I also have Alan plan to come to an October meeting to give an update on what he's been working on since he came into his role in June. And he would also provide you an update on the Connecticut Main Street Subcommittee, which has met two times already. And by then, we've probably would have met three or four times. So he'll provide you a nice update on that.
Great. Any questions? All right. On to 11, town managers' report.
Uh, so it's kind of a short report just because there's been, I was out a little bit last week and we were really focused on the fireworks. The fireworks were a huge success. We fun, we raised in a matter of about seven weeks, over $51,000, which was significantly more than anticipated. And it, so we exceeded the event budget by $11,245. So we didn't have to put any town funds to it. Historically, the town puts $10,000 donation to the chamber for this event. That was in my initial budget, but we didn't need to do that. So I will be working with Bob and the council to move those funds to a line item to support future events. I, I, again, we, the status of some of the events that annually take place are unknown at this point. But having these funds aside would be an opportunity for the council to step in and support those events if need be without affecting the budget itself. So I'm, I'm very proud of that. And again, thank you to all of our businesses. And we had so many people in the community that really stepped up and to my staff in the office because they, they took on this task. Again, that was something that we've never done before and really hit it out of the park. It was great. I do have a meeting today with the police department and other public safety and public works to have a debriefing on the event, you know, feedback on it, what could be done, different safety concerns. So this is a great opportunity for us to look at it and however the event moves forward in the future, we'll, we'll have some guidance on best practice. I also, I have a custodial vacancy. We had a resignation. And clerical union negotiations are continuing. And that's it.
Okay. Questions?
Just one. My usual. How are we proceeding with the solar?
Landfills on the agenda for, well, you mean the landfill capping? Solar is an option for that space.
Yeah.
Right, so that's gonna be, so they're gonna come, they're on the October 1st agenda. They were waiting for the final deep approval before they came to talk to the council. So they got that approval. So they're on the agenda for October 1st to give the council an update. And then the council will have options on what they'd like to do with that space. So that would be part of the conversation.
Yeah, because I just saw something, you know, where all the towns are concerned.
Yeah, New Haven just did it, yes.
Or some kind of incentive for those people is gonna run out.
Yeah. So they will be here October 1st.
Thank you.
Michelle, the fireworks, I know obviously everything going on, is there any way, when you do sit down with everybody, do a summary of the total, like, money in, money out, event that if the town is gonna continue to do this or somebody else is gonna take it over, that we have good data to say, hey, here's the amount we took in, here's the amount we spent, you know, kind of like a summary?
Absolutely. So we have, so we have a spreadsheet of all the donations and how much and all of that. And then each department provides me an invoice, honestly, because they do get paid back from these funds into their salary line items or overtime items, line items. Oh, absolutely.
Services or fire services, yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
But that, the total account of hours and all that.
And that's how I based my original budget was from the, I had Bob pull up what was paid out last year, and that's how I determined the number I needed. And then there was some cost savings measures this year by having it at the beach. And we were able to get some things donated that in the past we didn't. So, but yes, absolutely, we do have a very thorough record.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Michelle. Chairman's report. I, I wanted, obviously, the success of the fireworks was undeniable and very loud. But I wanted to thank Michelle and the council for the quieter success of the Michael B. Eard concert, the continuation of that. Because those were memorial concerts for their son. And I am very appreciative that they went forward. So.
Can I add one more thing to mind that I forgot to mention? Um, we had the first annual harbor boat parade. Huge shout out to Robert Derry, Rob Derry and the Harbor Commission for spearheading that. It was a huge success. I was out on the boat with the police, saw the boats up and close, and they were so great, so creative. There were 14 that participated. The local businesses down in the harbor provided gift certificates as awards and prizes. So it was great. There was standing room only at all the viewing sites. So this will be the first of an annual event that I think is just gonna grow in popularity. So I wanted to make sure I mentioned that as well.
Excellent. All right. Item 13, council discussion? No? Item 14, town council committee liaison reports?
I, I have a report from Park and Rec. The, um, the last meeting, I think the grant money update, I don't know how much everybody's up to date on this, but I was out of, out of touch on this. But the total grant funding was $305,000, as you all know. They have a remaining balance of $159,248. Similar to ARPA, they have a deadline that they have to use it by, which is December 26, 2026. So they've spent $145,000 on the pavilion, the bath house, consultant. And so I think, you know, they basically are gonna use the rest of that money for an expansion of the playground and for erosion. The problem with the erosion is they have to get a 90-day permit. And sometimes that could take a year. So they're just keeping an eye on that. If, if it's, if they're not gonna get a permit in time, they have to figure out something else. The skate park came up, you know, the usage is minimal. I don't know, I know some of you were around the last time they sort of thought about getting, you know, doing something different with that area. There was, you know, some town residents who spoke up in favor of it. And, but, you know, since that point, you know, there's, the usage has gone down, deterioration is going down, where you, the Park and Rec is using their budget to, to keep it up. So they're gonna continue to talk about that and try to figure out a plan. If they do decide to get rid of the skate park, you know, there's discussions on what to do with that area. The, you know, I, I think that area is on school ground, so they have, probably have to involve Mary Ann. But, you know, pickleball, basketball court, things along those lines are, you know, old, put the tennis courts back there that used to be there. So those are all ideas that will be kicked around at that point. Family Day was a huge success with excellent turnout. The field issue, I guess it, it was reviewed and, and they said it was fine to play on for this year. So they're not going to make any changes besides, you know, minor things. I think that's it. The next meeting's next Tuesday, I'll, I'll be going to that. So if you have anything you want me to ask them, let me know. Sports, oh, sports season is underway. Park and Rec is the Saturday opening day, and the high school teams are out. Boys and girls soccer's gonna look strong again this year, field hockey looks stronger. I don't like how's the football team look.
Fingers crossed, it'll be a better season than last year.
Yeah. That's it.
Anyone else? All right, so item 14A, is there a motion to go into executive session? Second? Discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second? Discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.